...to order. And if you would please, if you have a phone, shut it to silent so we don't have any phones ringing in the middle of the meeting, and if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I will call the roll. We have our attorney with us, Tony Piers. Mr. Tinkle is here, Mr. Banks is here, Mrs. Feinberg is here, Mr. Guy is here, Mrs. Flaherty is here, and our district manager, Chris Schumaker is here. And we have speakers. Mr. Schumaker?
Yes, starting Jim Brand. Hurricane Irma Hampton Park.
Good afternoon, James Brand, Jim Elias, 10154 Avalon Lake Circle Hampton Park. I want to say thank you to the board and to the staff. My personal experience, we never lost water throughout the whole Hurricane Irma event. Our toilets flushed each and every time. We had gallons and gallons of water to be prepared. We had the bathtubs full so we could flush the toilets. We never had to use any of them. So, thank you. I'm speaking on my behalf. I know several neighbors who had water come in through the vents of their roofs, and I know a couple who said, "Oh, my toilet won't flush." And that was for an hour or two. But thank you for all your effort. I know that the staff and you all prepared for that event. We had plenty of warning, thank goodness. The only negative I can tell you is that the manhole cover in front of my house backed up the sewage during the worst of the storm. My goodness. That's a blessing. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, Joe Schofield.
Thank you, Chris. Joe Schofield, Carina, Pelican Preserve. And again, I want to extend my thanks to everybody, the board, our Carina group, our Pelican Preserve. It was, they did a fantastic job helping people and coordinating. But I'm here because I'm on the turnover committee for the P-PAC group, and I got a call yesterday from a friend whose mailbox was knocked off. It's a third one in a month. And these things cost $150 to get repaired. If you can get the welder to come out and fix them, $700-plus dollars to replace them. So yesterday I got curious, and I went out and looked at my mailbox, and I find that they are not installed in accordance with the codes. And that means every mailbox in Carina and probably Pelican Preserve that is on the sidewalk side of the communities, the mailbox extends over the street five inches approximately. It should be six to eight inches back from the street. That would mean that the sidewalk, or that the mailboxes should actually be embedded in the sidewalk. But we're paying $150 to $700-plus dollars every time one gets knocked down. Three in a month is a lot. I've lived in a lot of neighborhoods, and I've seen kids come by with baseball bats, maybe, but we're doing this with construction trucks, people traveling through the community. And I would request that this be put on the docket for conversation with WCI, as these mailboxes do not meet the United States Postal Service codes. And I have a nice diagram. I always come with drawings. And I'll give that to Chris. And I thank you.
Joe, are you saying that the postal service requirement is six inches back off the edge of the concrete?
Six to eight inches back from the curb.
Does that, are yours those decorative metal?
Yes, they are.
Do they have a, then an additional six to eight, 10 inches to get to the center line of the box to where your vertical stake is?
The stake is probably eight inches.
So, six and eight, 14?
That grass strip is only this wide.
That was going to be my question. Can you get from the curb, can you physically get the 14 inches to be able to be compliant?
No way. There's no possible way to physically do that. They have to go into the concrete sidewalk.
Or turn them sideways.
I want to see the postal gal trying to do that.
We'll hear about that.
No, I realize, you know, I can't tell you how many mailboxes have been knocked down in the last year.
So your sidewalks are that close to the curb?
I would say they're within 18 inches of the curb.
Because if you go 18 inches to the curb, and you've got a six-inch, seven-inch hangover to the backside.
Correct.
People walking down the sidewalk are going to hit them with their arms.
Well, one and one equals two, and I don't think our engineers figured that out yet. I shouldn't say that. You know, the fact is physically, the dimensions don't stack up properly, and the mailboxes hang over the street. Therefore, they're extremely susceptible to the, to people that are delivering stuff, the construction crews. I know the mailbox yesterday apparently was hit by the landscaping crew, and for once they actually apparently knocked on the door to tell the neighbor. But most of them, we've been told, hey, if you don't have a picture and can't prove who did it, it's your problem.
Has this ever come up as an issue before?
I have no idea, but I've been involved with three of them in the last month. And I think three in a month is an awful lot, and I've seen others lying on the ground. So as I say, yesterday I just went out with my tape measuring a level and just measured, and I was five inches over from the grass, which is, I'm over the gutter.
Have you approached the N.R.W.C.I. about the issue?
Just found it yesterday afternoon, so this is the first political group I can come to and report, but since we're in the turnover phase, I do believe this would be an issue that could be included in the turnover of Carina. And I haven't driven through Mata Rita yet, but I'm sure that it would be the same issue in Mata Rita also.
Joe, have you checked your covenants? Because I know in Gateway Greens, where I've got 1,300 residents, the mailboxes are the property of the property owner and have nothing to do with either the Master Association or any sub-associations.
Well, the mailboxes were-
You might check that with your covenants.
Okay, I'll check that. The mailboxes were installed by WCI, so if I need to meet the U.S. Postal Service code, then I'm going to request a permit, the concrete, to dig a hole in my sidewalk.
Well, what you might have to do is get a mass order from them, have them move them over, because it's, it's one of those, what do they call those, class action deals?
Yeah.
To where everybody is impacted by it. Because I know I've had people come to my HOA and scream about the mailboxes, and we've been advised by council, we can't touch it, it's a private deal. We just don't have anything to do with it. Our covenants call for one thing and one thing only, well, two things. It's yours, and it has to be alike everybody else's. So, you know, you can't go out and put in a dolphin or a, whatever you want out there, fish, for your mailbox, they all have to be the same. I imagine yours is the same, but if your covenants are like ours, and they are the private, it might be that you have to do some type of an action through the post office to them, telling them they're not compliant.
I will follow through. Thank you.
That'd put us in a bad position if we're trying to do something that we don't have any leg to stand on, is what I'm trying to avoid.
I don't want to put you in that position, but I don't know where to start.
I don't mind bringing the subject up, I just don't know how far I can run with it.
Well, I've sat in one meeting and been told, well, you didn't tell the right people. And I said, "I've told everybody, I don't know who the right person ever is." So anyhow, thank you.
See what sticks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Judy Peck, Eagle Point.
My name is Judy Peck, and I live at Cypress Point. I too want to express my thanks and my gratitude for what Chris has done and to get us prepared, his staff. Kudos to all of them. They did a great job. I understand you as a board, you have a thankless job. It is just simply thankless. So I appreciate what you've done. And my concerns for the future and my hopes for the future is that when we have to spend money, people understand that it's in connection with trying to get things in line for preparation of things that might happen. So I hope they see that after this tragic thing that some people has went through, that we don't want to be in that situation. So I hope everyone will stand behind y'all and keep that in mind when y'all are trying to prepare for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And last card that I have, Russell Tiderback, Gardner.
Hello, Russell Tiderback. I'm representing Gardner on the corner of Daniels and Gateway Boulevard. I appreciate everything that the board has done and your staff that I've actually was able to reach during and after the event when we had the water precautionary. I do believe it was Chris Schumaker that was hooked on the phone, and numerous other ladies trying to find the right resources to get to. The reason I wanted to come to the board today was to basically ask not to forget about the business units there. We have 1,800 associates that come to that place, and they rely on us to tell them the water's bad, you know, the services are out, stuff like that. So I just want to make sure that in the future, that don't forget about the business units, because we've spent a lot of effort trying to find the right contacts and the right information on the website, which is not really updated, to provide the information. So I finally got ahold of the lady at the pool, which gave me Chris's number. So it was a coincidence that it happened to work, but I must have dialed 15 phone numbers. So I just wanted to make sure that in the future that it, that information is shared with the business units as well, not just, you know, the residents here.
We'll make sure we do that.
Thank you. And Chris has been great. I'm not, that's, definitely don't take this as negative. You know, we love your community, we love everything about Gateway, so I think you guys have done a great job.
We appreciate it, Gardner.
And would you just state your title for the record?
Oh, yes, I'm the operations manager for the Gardner facilities here in Fort Myers.
So, and I asked Russ to come in, because we were talking about getting people back in the building, and there were some opportunities, and some lessons learned, to either open up maybe a hotline or something if power goes out and there's no internet, or, you know, just other alternatives for the commercial side of our community to be alerted, or at least have somewhere to go. So, and Russ worked really hard and his staff to get the building back up and running, so I appreciate you coming, Russ.
And related to that, we're now talking to the Comcast folks, because their top-shelf service center for southeast is there, and they couldn't open because the water pressure was kind of low. And I told them, two of the county plants that service, one of them had a problem, but they couldn't totally staff the building and have the full water supply, and more importantly, flush 30 toilets at one time. So as the county plant came on, they started bringing more people into the facility, but that's one of those things we noted during the storm, working with them on the commercial side.
But the water pressure wasn't down long, was it, Russ? I mean, because we had that same issue.
We did, and it was roughly about an hour. And, you know, we were trying to keep the families that were coming in that were affected by the storms, as well as the associates to be able to work. So it was roughly an hour, but it was a, it was a trying hour, because we didn't tell everybody. We didn't want to tell everybody that's down, because as soon as everybody knows, then they want to go use the restroom. So it's just one of those things, you know, trying to herd 1,800 cats all at once, and everybody having problems, and kids, and everything in a tight confined space. That's why it was really important, just precautionary, are you sure precautionary? That's what we've got to make sure, because we definitely don't want to make anybody sick. That could be a bigger nightmare to solve.
And the county health department was out sampling, and we also went around the community and pulled samples. And they had one, one sample that was bad in the community. It was at a closed school. So, and that was cleared out day after.
Mr. Guy, you have a question?
Russ, is your complex served by a generator or a series?
We do, we actually have three generators on site, one for each building. And it's maintained by contractors on the outside, and so we refuel, we manage the hours and everything like that. So we didn't lose power in the building at all, any of our buildings. It was just, you know, the services that we could provide afterwards, because we were contemplating, or Gardner as a whole was contemplating, making it a recovery shelter, especially for our associates. But getting that process and legality and everything else done, it just didn't happen this time.
And there may be some opportunities, like with a company and organization like Gardner. I mean, Russ has a whole, full disaster relief protocol, and a lot of things we might be able to tap into, you know, in the future, just for some best practices, and, you know, just any opportunities that we have to partner.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again to Russ.
Was there anyone else?
Nope, that's it.
Tony, I wanted to ask you, since we had not really adjourned the last meeting, we-
Continued it.
Continued it.
Then canceled it.
Do we need to do anything to adjourn that meeting or bring that information?
No, I think we just reflect on the record that the meeting of the 7th, that was continued to the 13th, was canceled due to post-recovery efforts, post Hurricane Irma recovery efforts. And just note that in the minutes when they come before the board. It'll be appropriate.
All right, just wanted to take care of that. You'll go to business. So district engineer.
Good afternoon, my name is Tyler Wainwright with Tetra Tech. I'll be your district engineer tonight. I don't have anything new to report to you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Only thing I've asked is, have we passed on the Florida line documents, and have you signed off on them to send them to North Carolina?
Yes.
They're off?
It's already delivered to them, and the check's being processed.
Yeah, we definitely want to get that check up there in that amount of the final payment. Throw the ball in their court.
And Mr. Tyser's aware of it, and the amounts, and it's coming his way.
Yeah, I think just to bring the whole board up to speed, since we can't do any discussion, which is a pain. We've got a certificate of substantial completion, which I guess we settled on a date of September 1st as 2016, as the date of certificate of substantial completion, which is insignificant now, since we passed. We had a final change order, adjusting quantity change, or adjusted, adjustment price change order that reflected the deducts that we had talked about in the meeting two, three meetings ago, and then a final payment request that equaled that amount in the amount of $72,000 and change, something like that. So we get that check to them, the ball's in their court. The ball's in their court to decide to accept the check. Once they cash that check, it's done. If they don't cash the check, then we'll go from there.
Mr. Banks, do you have anything?
No.
Mrs. Flaherty? Mr. Guy?
No.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
That brings us to district council.
Two things I may, and one you may want to ask, if anybody wants to sign up and speak, because it's an action item, it's not on there. Part of the discussion that, the reason why the meeting was continued was to discuss the Girl Scout contract. Stuff started hitting the fan, obviously, and then the whole week, our office was out of power until Sunday. So wasn't able to communicate with Shawn Ellis, the attorney for the Girl Scouts, until, I think Monday or Tuesday, it's just been that kind of week. Like, their servers weren't up until Monday. I spoke with him about having a further extension on the timeframe to obtain the PUD amendment, and also to obtain the release of the deed restrictions from Lee County. I explained to Mr. Ellis that my conversations with Robert Clemmons at the county lands, that the item is, they're targeting the disclaimer and release of the deed restrictions for October 3rd Board of County Commissioners meeting. And again, that got sort of sidetracked, too, because of Hurricane Irma. And I mentioned to him that we have not had as responsive of response, as Michael's been nudging and noodling and whatever he can, cajoling the various individuals that said they would provide their letters of no objection, but they have not yet delivered them to him, except for one, I think, Michael, is that correct? Or two? Hey, okay, we're moving one.
Two residents?
Church. Church.
I talked to the pastor, and they, their board's approved it.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager. I have two residents who've given us the letter of no objection. The church said that it will be forthcoming tomorrow. And then we have two residents that are still adjacent residents, and the adjacent HOA in Pinecrest spoke to a gentleman today, one of the adjacent property owners, and he said that he would not issue his letter of no objection until the residents have a meeting in October to discuss. They want to have, instead of the board deciding, they want to have a meeting with the community, and then at that time they will decide whether or not to give us the letter of no objection. We're kind of up against the wall, because Tony's worked with Girl Scouts Council, and I believe they've given us to October 24th. And in speaking with county staff, they could expedite the administrative PUD process, but I don't know if it could be, how compressed that could be. I haven't received the date for the meeting in October for the Pinecrest HOA. I have to follow up with them to see when that meeting was going to occur.
Anything from the, any from the HOA president? Has Sherry gotten back to you with any intent?
They had me dealing with the HOA agent, or their-
The management company?
The management company, and I've been working through him, and they said that they would, they're not comfortable with the process, and they want their attorney to review it. So it sounds like things are kind of getting bogged down with Pinecrest.
The management company said they're not comfortable, or the, that's a direction from the board?
The direction from the HOA board.
I think we should be at that meeting.
Well, I guess the question is timing. As Michael indicated, I'm not, it's a timing issue. I mean, I don't know how compressed the county staff can expedite it. Did they give an indication that once everything was at their door, it would be two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
He said normally it's a month, and then he said if things were really pushed, that it could be expedited. He didn't-
Okay. And so they're comfortable with, they knew, they know what use, the limited use that we're requesting?
Yes.
And did he, the staff person, indicate that the county staff would have any objection?
They did not, because we, they had spoken to county attorney's office, and by the district voluntarily removing uses that were-
Broader.
Not so well-liked by the residents, that it had, with us voluntarily removing those uses, the county would have no objection to us doing that.
Okay. And so I guess this is one of those issues where one area is more positive, because it doesn't rely upon third parties to provide their input. And I've had further conversations, in talking to Mr. Ellis, the attorney for the Girl Scouts. They're amenable to, well, we discussed whether they'd be amenable to the extension of the drop dead date being November 6th, it's a Monday, a 45-day extension. When I talked with Mr. Ellis, he discussed, and he said that one of their concerns or irritations or concerns was that, under the contract right now, the time to close, assuming everything is fixed after the cure period, is 45 days after the cure period. In my conversation with him, I said, "I'm talking out of school, but how about running by your clients? You cut that 45 days to 20." And there's plenty of time, because everything would have been done by them, the surveys, inspections, and he was amenable to running that by his clients. And so then he also said that what his clients indicated was that they want weekly updates or updates, status reports, because they feel like they've been left in the dark, right or wrong, and they want copies of all communications between us and the county. So I drafted, what you have in front of you is a proposed draft Second Amendment to the agreement that changes, the closing date would be 20 days after the end of the cure period, which is plenty of time to get everything done, as opposed to 45 days. That's in paragraph two. Paragraph three would change, excuse me, would change the timeframe for us to obtain the removal of the covenants from basically today until, it'll be November 6th. I didn't add properly, it'd be November 6th. If we didn't get it by November 6th, we could terminate the contract. And then we would provide weekly written reports and updates concerning the status of obtaining the release, and timely provide the seller with copies of comments from and written communications with Lee County staff. And the same thing with the PUT amendment, we would have until November 6th to get the PUT amendment. And again, on November 6th, if we did not have it, we could terminate it and get the deposit back. And we, again, would be required to provide weekly written updates as to the status, and timely provide the Girl Scouts with copies of all letters of no objection received by us, and comments from and communications with Lee County staff. And I thought that idea of the weekly status reports and written, and the copies of documents was a reasonable request. That way they would be, again, kept up to date. He, Mr. Ellis, if I have a recent email from him or not, no, but he mentioned that what I had drafted and sent to him, which is in front of you, without the corrected date, it says November 15th, it should be November 6th. He said, "The language appears consistent with their request," meaning their client's request. So he indicated, "Please proceed with this document as a proposed draft." So what I would request, if the board's so inclined to agree to enter into a Second Amendment to the contract in substantially final form is in front of you, to extend the cure periods for the PUT amendment and the covenant restrictions to November 6th, change the timing of the closing to be 20 days after all that is taken care of, which would be around Thanksgiving, if everything came to fruition, as opposed to sometime in December. And then also, we would provide those weekly reports and copies of all documents. If the board, and once again, that's our recommendation to keep this process rolling if you wish to.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion for discussion.
I'll second it.
I want to make sure I understand this, where it seems like somewhere somebody is losing sight of what we're trying to do here. If we, let's say, just dropped out of this picture, the building is still for sale, what uses can they make out of that building, knowing that we have this zoning, whatever you want to call it, limitation? Who can they sell it to?
Well, that's been part of the discussion, and, you know, we've had it sort of internally. I mean, my understanding was that they had a prior party who wanted to buy it, but the uses were inappropriate. I understand-
My point is, is that whoever buys it, it sounds like to me they're going to run the same gauntlet with the same individuals.
I had the conversation with Mr. Ellis, and he said that his clients are willing to work with us. Wait, no, wait on that. You know, I mean, if this doesn't go through, they recognize that, but they're also willing to work with us on these extensions. That's why I think these, the rub is, hopefully the neighbors will expedite their meeting, you know, the Pinecrest folks, to be able to get something in the door real quickly. I don't know when, in October, if it's the last week in October, I think we're toast if we do. I mean, we can try, we can just keep trying and trying and trying.
Have you talked to Ed? You talked to Seashell?
I did.
What's he looking at a date for that meeting? Because it wouldn't bother me to go there and tell those guys, you're making a mountain out of a molehill on this. Because whoever comes in behind us, if this fails, is going to do the same dang thing.
Well, and even better, and better or worse, if I hadn't looked at it, is that the next party may want to have a different use.
Yeah.
And they may not mind going through the hearing examiner process-
Yeah, for a liquor store.
And go to the county commission for something else.
Daycare.
More than just an office. That's correct. And so-
I think they need to understand that we aren't a bad game in town.
Well, and I thought originally the pushback from both the HOA and the residents were the additional zone categories, and I believe we struck those. We consented to that.
That was about three, four weeks ago, almost, Michael.
And so I don't, I don't understand why there is a delay. I have no idea.
And that's what I told them today.
I think this is going beyond the issue.
That there's, the HOA doesn't have a level of comfort. I said, "We've done everything that you've asked. We've acquiesced and given you everything you wanted. Why don't you sign?"
And what's the, what is their concern? They're saying they don't have a level of comfort. About what? What is their hangup?
What the board might-
That we're going to use it differently than what we're-
I, I don't know. It's, it kind of boggles my mind.
And again, from the perspective of the district, if this amendment is entered into by the parties, we could keep pursuing it in good faith, in good faith, in good faith. And if we don't achieve it by that date, we can terminate it and we get the deposit back. And so I think we need to press those folks more, maybe they might push back more. I don't know, Michael's been dealing with them on an individual basis. But just as an aside, our office building is next to a residential area in Naples. They love us as a neighbor, because I tell you, after five and our weekends, they got this big parking lot in Hedge, that's all they look at in a building that sits there. Maybe, we don't, so it's, I mean, they're happy, you know, they've got offices there.
Who's their cam?
Hayden.
It's Hayden Associates, yes.
Mr. Guy had a question.
Thank you. This reminds me of Catch 22, if you've ever read that book.
Yes, sir. Milo Minderbinder. Isn't that the one individual, if I'm not mistaken?
It's my understanding that the only reason we're going through this monkey business is because the county didn't set the, the standards properly in the first place.
I don't know, I wasn't present at the creation, so I guess the question is, how was it allowed to operate all those years as it was when there's a fuzzy area?
Well, we don't, we're not going to operate anything differently than what the Girl Scouts did for 20 years. So this is all monkey business. So this is all monkey business. And I have a feeling that those people in Pinecrest are not going to agree to this, which leads me to say, we've got to go to the county and tell them, "We want it. Doggone it, we want it." And you're muddling it up, doesn't...
I don't think the county is muddling it up, Mr. Guy. I think, and Tyler had the communications with the county, and I think Michael also, I think they were just saying that there's no defined use for this building as either the current use or proposed use as an office, the Girl Scout office use.
That's just mumbo jumbo.
Well, I guess...
We're not going to use it any differently than the Girl Scouts did, and so there's no reason for any kind of change in the zoning. It's just a bunch of blunder.
They're looking for us to cover their you-know-whats.
Well, I want to...
To the county.
Tyler...
Why don't we tell them that we're tired of that? Tell them to just give us what we need, and we can go ahead.
I'm all for it.
What's to stop us? I mean...
Here's the... I've not had the conversation with county staff. Tyler and Michael have. And here's the issue. If the county does not believe the proposed use by the district is authorized under the PUD as it exists, they can refuse to issue the business tax receipt, which is formerly known as the occupational license, and say you're illegally using that property and cite us to code enforcement.
And then would we have to just go through that process post-occupancy?
Yes, but at that point in time, we may not get it, because you may get it, may not get it. Again, it's that you end up going to the hearing examiner and the county commission process, which is much more expensive.
You don't want to do that.
No.
You do not want to do that.
Just rolling the dice a little too much.
And I guess, Tyler, what was the conversation you had with the beginning?
Hello, Ken. I'll try to simplify this as much as I can. Back in the original zoning ordinance for all of Gateway, which was in 1985, there was this map that someone made. They drew lines around areas, and they say, "This area is going to be this use, this area is going to be this use, this area is going to be this use." Multi-family, single-family, town center, whatever. There was also a written document, the PUD, which defined what could happen in those areas. So they said, "In a town center, you can have office space, you could have retail, you could have whatever." So there's two components. The map did not match the written part. And that's not...
Surprise.
If it's not specific to that area, that's actually in a lot of areas, and it's caused problems ever since. So, basically, the map is what the county is going by. So the county said, "Okay, the map calls this park slash utility district." I think that's what it's called. The written document doesn't have that district. So they said, "There's no approved uses for that district." So we argued, "Well, listen, the Girl Scouts have been there using it as an office building for 20-plus years. We just want to do that." They said, "So sad, too bad."
They said what?
They said, "Too bad."
So it's... Right now, it's zoned as a park...
Utility.
Park utility.
So for 20... So for 20 years, they ignored their own rules of what they're going to tell us to do and use us as the example?
Basically, yes.
Aren't we really opening just a business administrative and park office?
Is somebody playing with us as well, we got?
But you're...
It's time to go political.
We had the same argument that Mr. Guy just had a moment ago. We said, "Listen, we're not going to do anything different than what the building has been used for historically for the last 20-plus years." And they said, "Look, we understand that, but it never finished, never should have been approved like that in the past. We can't go wrong again."
We can't go wrong for the 21st year.
So that's essentially where we're at, and that's essentially the... That's what we have. So we have an area that, as Mr. Tinkle said earlier, regardless of whoever purchases this property, there are no approved uses currently for this property. You could not do anything with this building unless you go through the process that we are going through, or you can go through a worse process, the worst, longer process of a public hearing.
A hearing.
What department are we dealing with down there?
Lee County zoning.
Lee County zoning. Make a phone call tomorrow.
Yeah, again, and as this agreement is structured, if we diligently, continuously in good faith, continue to pursue as we have been, that's my argument, that we have been. We had a little bit of delays, but again, we've been working with county staff, Michael's been working with the residents, that on that November 6th, if we don't have both of these in place, we can terminate and get the deposit.
What we need to find out is when the HOA meeting is.
Right.
Because the date of that is probably the most critical.
But today's the day to decide whether or not to make this amendment or not, or terminate. That's the problem.
It looks like to me that we don't have a lose, no lose. If we do this, go ahead and do it. It just keeps the option open. In the meantime, I think we have to go backdoor on some of this stuff. This is ridiculous.
Has anybody talked to Cecil?
That's what I'm going to do when I get home. This is absurd.
Don't be sure, and don't call me and tell me what he said. Don't...
He would tell you what he said at the next board meeting, sure.
Michael.
Or there'd be a memorandum to the manager about what happens to managers.
I can go make a phone call right now and find out when that meeting is.
Would you stand there?
But again, I think we need... I think the state is something, they're not going to... They're not going to budge from the state. And again...
But my thing is not trying to convince Tony, the Girl Scout people. My deal is to try to tell those people over there...
Understand.
Is that this is not going to change just because our name is on the deal. The next one that comes, you're going to be fighting the same thing again. It's ridiculous.
You get...
I think Ms. Flaherty has a question. I'm sure I'm...
I have two questions.
Okay, go ahead.
The first question is, did anybody check this building from damages from Irma?
Chris, you make a bid at my request.
We went by, and there was a downed tree and a lot of vegetation, no structural damage, and it's actually been cleaned up this week. Yeah, trees gone.
Nothing inside?
I haven't been inside, but it didn't look like there were any...
And they are responsible for the condition of building up until the time of closing. So, I mean, they...
No windows broken, nothing out of place.
My second was, I'd like to have the motion stated totally word for word.
I think the motion was, and I could have run...
Motion was to approve the Second Amendment with the modifications that you suggested.
As to the date being November 6th...
Six.
In all instances, in both paragraph three and paragraph four.
And then the change of 45 days to 20?
That's in there.
Oh, that's in there, okay. Okay. Did anybody else have any comment, Mr. Guy?
I almost lost it there for a second, but I...
Seize your bill.
Madam Chairman, you may also want to ask, many members of the public want to sign up and speak on this topic before the board actually votes on them.
Was there anybody that wanted direct comments to the board on this Girl Scout building? Jim?
Are you stalling so Bill can get his thought back, whatever?
I think I know what Jim's going to say.
This is Jim Brand, Hampton Park again. I'm amazed how much money has anybody kept count of how many dollars you all are spending to try to buy something that's not zoned properly? My goodness, guys. Are there other buildings that you could look at that are similar cost and similar function? Think about that.
Jim, I can answer, at least not for the CDD, but for the HOA. I did this a couple of years ago, and I'll tell you, the price that they're asking for rental space, no way. This is about our only deal, save going and building our own building.
And we had a commercial Realtor look in this area to see if there was any other buildings that were available for sale. There's not.
So one more comment. Somebody mentioned the option of going through, having this HOA approve and these residents approve, is having a public hearing. What's the delay of waiting for a public hearing to take place? Is that something the county has to do?
If... My understanding is if this has to go through the hearing examiner and county commission process, it's six months to a year, and it's much more expensive and time-consuming.
That's the problem.
You know, I and Ed both know about HOAs. You don't just find out what the date of the HOA is. You have to get the HOA board to agree to put you on the agenda, and they don't got to do that.
I think we have, in good faith, the... At least I've had some communication with them, and they're... I think they're more than willing to address this issue. I didn't even think it'd have to go this far, so there must be, you know, some kinks they want to work out. And I'll just speak to, you know, there's... The reason why this property is desirable is, one, it really adds additional asset value to what we have in place with the park. So it... Having two separate properties have asset values, but when you combine them together, it increases our acreage, and the location, I think, is beneficial for the residents and the church, because it would be a, you know, a facility. There's location proximity. So there's a lot of... We went through a whole pros and cons, you know, how long ago? A year ago, whatever? But I do respect your comments, and I think we have done full due diligence.
Oh, I'm not questioning the due diligence. I'm just questioning, here you are a year later, and you still have an intransigent community.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Flaherty, you have a comment?
I do have to comment. I think we should go back and just think about expanding this building. That was one of our alternatives.
Madam Chairman, the motion has been made and seconded.
Yep. I'm going to call the question. Before I do that, Mike, did you get a date for their meeting?
Yes, ma'am. October 24th at 6:00 p.m.
Did you get a place?
Here.
That's convenient.
I'm not even going there.
Tony, does that give us enough time?
What day was it?
The 24th.
October 24th. Boy, that's tight.
You need to ask to get on the agenda.
There are 13 days between October 24th and November 6th.
Yep.
Until we get the letters of no objection, this mittels can't be made, correct?
Correct.
So how many working days are there between... Not many. There's probably eight.
What's the chance of extending that, November 6th to the 10th?
Or asking the board for a special meeting.
Yeah.
I would go on that route if it's...
Again, the key is that we, as long as we are diligently pursuing it, the fact that they're setting their agenda at a different time does not mean we are pushing them and, you know, following up to encourage them to have a date that's different. That's the key, is what are we doing to try to move this along?
Non-business days.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second, and I'm going to call the question to extend and accept this Second Amendment.
All right.
Aye. Posed? Aye.
Hey, Mike, will you just maybe reach out to, is it Dave over there, the management company, or whoever you're talking to?
It's Dave.
See if Dave can relay a message to the HOA board, and see if they would be interested in having a special meeting.
Yeah, what I would suggest, again, is to document that in writing as an email or a letter to them, say, "We request an expedited consideration. Girl Scouts were kind enough to offer an extension. You know, we are continuing to diligently pursue this." You know, if you can put that in the email...
I'll copy.
I mean, and we've had multiple meetings over the past year, and I don't think we've heard from one Pinecrest resident, maybe one, in opposition. So, I mean, we're here first and Thursday of every month, they're, you know, more than happy to take any questions or comments.
Agreed.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Anything else?
Secondly, and Mr... Because I did not have this document, and I was not able to stop at ABC Liquors on the way up, and I did not stop at my son and daughter-in-law's house on the way up because they are Corbell aficionados. I don't have the Corbell, but...
Oh, this sounds like a road deal and a champagne toast.
I know I signed the document.
The deed from WCI to Lee County was recorded the 19th. Our deed went of record yesterday, but it reflects the date of today, at 12:01 today, the roads have been deeded to Lee County.
Hooray!
So I'm sorry, I'll bring it next board meeting, okay?
Diane, open the champagne.
I'll bring it.
She's got it back there. We'll find a bar once this meeting's...
I'll show you my son and daughter-in-law's hurricane survival kit, four bottles of Corbell, Skippy peanut butter and a flashlight. But I apologize that I didn't have a chance to stop at...
I can't believe this wasn't on the evening news.
It came at 12:01 today, that's why.
National news.
Might be on tonight.
Yes. So thank you very much. No, everybody, thank you very much on... And I just now remembered, I had my semi-less-than-senior moment.
This does prove one thing, that Ed was wrong. He said hell would freeze over before this happened. It was close.
Hey, can we ask the county what they're going to do about cleaning that mess up on their streets?
Don't do that. Don't go down that road.
I think that's a bad idea.
Michael's handsome as conversations, I understand.
They'll probably tell us to stack it up over at the Girl Scout building.
That dog doesn't hunt. I've got news for you. Are you done?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Several questions for Tony.
Okay.
One is, do you know, because we're going to be having a meeting with parties relative to our maintenance of ponds and wetlands, what do we own, what do we have as control of the waterway from good old Stony Brook to Pond 130?
That's the FPL easement.
It's an easement. Well, it's not only FPL, it's on the other side.
Oh, the other side.
What is... We need to look at that document. We can't maintain that dang thing, unless we have it and we're not maintaining it, and if we have the right to maintain it, then it begs the question, why aren't we doing it?
Is this the one on the west side of the Boulevard?
I'm talking about from the minute it goes over the weir at Stony Brook, or under the weir, or through the weir, and dumps from there all the way to Pond 130, do we have an agreement that allows us to go in there and do whatever? Because one of the issues, Tyler and Tetra Tech did a couple of years ago an analysis of the carrying capacity of that, what do you call it, ditch? Open ditch? And we had a question about that carrying capacity at that time. We also know that we have a couple of pipes going underneath there that are possibly restrictions to the flow. My thing is, is while we've got some issues in Stony Brook, let's make sure the issues on our side of the Stony Brook weir are resolved, and one of those is the maintenance of that thing, i.e. the aquatics.
I'll get with Tyler and Michael and check on that, okay?
Because it's all overgrown on, on your side, so, I mean, at worst, we just need a maintenance, get it cleaned up.
Yeah, if we have the right to go in there, let's just go in there and do it.
Okay.
And it had been cleaned, Aquagenics had done it at one time, and I thought that that was part of our agreement with them, was that flow.
As of today, when I looked at it, it looked like a mess on both sides.
Yeah, including on the other side of Gateway Boulevard, too.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
The second thing is, is the FPL easement, again, because we can't do this daggone communication, this is frustrating, I've talked to Dave Caldwell on this, and I've sent Tony a copy of the document that I received back from Dave, and it does appear the intent has been, or was, at all along, that the FPL easement was going to be given over to us as a part of the park system. The problem is the math doesn't work.
The what doesn't, math?
The math, the math.
M.A.T.H. math?
M.A.T.H.
As opposed to math, okay.
Yeah, the, the development order originally called for 270 acres to be created in Gateway for parks and recreation, that was the intent. The First Amendment to the development order reduced that to 135. Well, the fact is, is that we have right now the fun park, the soccer park, and the commons park, which total about 44, 46 acres. So if you take that and subtract it from 135, that means we got 88 acres of supposedly park.
Somewhere.
Somewhere. Well, if, if WCI, and I agree with them with their, their reading of the documents, that 135 acres is supposed to be ours, and I did the same math, it is about 135 acres from Griffin Drive all the way to Gateway Boulevard, and then from Gateway Boulevard to the dump, there's another nine, so, plus or minus 135.
We don't want that.
We don't want that. I think we're going to get it, but that's a different story, I've got other ideas on that.
They're figuring it out.
The issue is, is it can't be 270 acres to 135, because if we have 44 and there's 135 there, that's 179 acres. Bottom line is, it looks like all of that is coming to us. They understand that they have to clean the, Jim, they'll be happy with this, they understand they have to clean the exotics, they understand they have to finish that path, which is admirable, in fact, that this was a, a separate company and not a bankrupt company, they're willing to do that. I think what I would like to do is suggest that we authorize Tony to work with either David or whoever their people are, let's make this happen and get this mess cleaned up once and for all, which would be inclusive of getting the latorals taken out of there to where that thing, it's an eyesore, it's a flat eyesore, and we could make that one heck of a deal for our park system, but that's as best as we got right now. They want to do something, they understand they have to do it, their excuse, their reason for not doing anything was because at one time there were two or three more ponds to be built to make the deal, they put in that 60-inch pipe and that negated the needed for those ponds, so those ponds are off the table, there are no reasons now whatsoever other than legal of the two parties get together and making it happen.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, maybe five years ago, or six years ago, maybe more, is when the WCI first approached, maybe longer, approached the district about taking that FPL easement, but there were the remaining lakes to Big Dog, and that became part of the difficulty as to how to handle that.
And that's gone.
And so that issue is no longer on the table, okay?
So, I'd, I'd like to take and suggest that Tony, working with either Mike or Chris, that we get what Caldwell and/or his counterpart over there on the legal side, let's make this happen and get this over with. We're maintaining it, we're doing everything right now as if we owned it, let's just get, get it part of our system.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Tony or Ed's, somebody, the, the FPL easement, I'm mentally viewing all of these metal structures that have all these wires going on them, that go all the way up to the four corners up here and then beyond.
Mm-hmm.
Are you suggesting that we take that property over and do something with it? And if you are suggesting that, have you or someone of equal stature ascertained as to what kind of liability there is?
Liability, yes, I suggested to Tony when I sent this, that before, obviously the plan is for us to do it, but that doesn't mean we drop over plate, roll over plate dead and do it. I think the, the, the whole concept sounds good, but I'd like to see the agreement between WCI that owns that, or whatever their predecessor was, that owns that, and what we're buying in the way of, what does that easement say that we have to accept?
There are...
What's the catchers?
I have a number of documents relating to that, there's three or four documents, one's a right-of-way agreement, one's a easement, maybe another easement, and if you go back to look at the old minutes, there was some initial little jousting with WCI and FPL way back when in the 80s and 90s over activities in that easement. And so we can, I can recreate all that, retrieve all that, and put that together in the memo as to what the issues are, because there are certain limitations, but the recognition is, if you look around Southwest Florida, a number of those transmission areas, there still are a lot of activities that can be engaged in, and/or it can still be utilized, and Pelican Marsh owns a big piece on Vanderbilt Beach Road, excuse me, Mocley, Livingston Road and Vanderbilt Beach Road, between Livingston Road and the edge of Pelican Marsh, and that comes in handy as a staging area for debris.
A staging area for debris.
For debris removal, for parking, for golfing events.
I thought Ed was talking about parks.
So, there are, there are some abilities to utilize that, you know.
But I know we've talked about that being a linear park, and parking is paid, but I'm, I'm going to defer, if we're going to open that up for a linear park that anybody can use from end to end, like Griffin Drive to Gateway Boulevard, remember that where it cuts through Hampton Park is behind their gatehouse.
I know.
So that means that anybody would have access to their community.
That's got to be figured out.
And I don't think that they'd be very happy about that.
We've got to figure out an answer to that, that's an issue.
If I could, Madam Chairman, that's a great question, James Brown, Hampton Park, 101, 541, we erected gates.
Right.
At Gateway Lakes Boulevard. It does allow a bicycle or a walker, there's a, a special bypass.
Bypass.
But you can't get through those gates, only people that can go through those gates are forward of power and line. So there's no way somebody in a four-wheel-drive pickup truck or whatever can get through those gates.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some issues there to work out, but my thing is...
We addressed that a year and a half ago.
I just want to make sure...
And I knew the gates had gone up, but I thought, we can't just open that up to a park.
It won't be open, it's open right now to anybody. Anybody right now can walk in that, and bicycle in and go on that path right now.
Yeah, that's the way I read it, there's, there's no restriction on that.
There's no restriction.
The, the one thing I, we, we've talked about it before, and we experienced it this last couple of weeks, we've got a requirement with the county and Lee County Utilities on that wastewater treatment plant, and that water that goes in there that comes back to us is critical, we don't want to lose a drop of that, but it means we have to account for it. And when we had the rains that we've had the last couple of weeks, and in fact, for that matter, the whole summer, we've got to have a place to get rid of water, other than on our landscaping, to which makes mowing grass and rutting it and making it a mess down at Gateway Boulevard and the other places. We need a place to dump that water in these kind of conditions, and that FPL easement, the full length of it, would be a perfect place to dump it.
As long as it doesn't end up in Stony Brook.
I think the term dump was used in a form of an irrigation system where you end up spreading it.
Yeah, irrigation system.
Yes.
So anyway, my, my recommendation would be based upon WCI wanting to do something, we authorize staff and Tony to work with them, and let's, let's get this thing, but I agree with Bill, we need to check to see what that, the conditions are, because I don't want to accept that thing and then have some deal that we have a liability that, oh, did we forget to tell you there's 240,000 REMs going through here and everybody's going to have to wear radioactive badges that go down that park?
Yeah, I mean, I...
That's the last thing we need.
I had three kids write on that easement, and for the most part, I think they're okay.
Yeah, just don't stand, don't stand on a metal truck in there, so anyway, that's, that would be my request, that we ask Tony to work on that.
Interesting enough, isn't aside to Lee...
They glow a little at night.
Interesting enough, Lee County has soccer field, the Marnie Fields by Terry Street along the interstate, it's under transmission.
That, that's just authorize Tony to, and Chris to, and Mike, work on that, they're willing, it sounds like it's an alternative, it's in the, in the books, in the order for it to be that a way, so, let's check it out and get that done, because it has some, it has some opportunity for us.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Tinkle, for clarification, you're talking about accepting the fee simple ownership with an FPL easement over it, not accepting an easement?
Yeah, I don't know how, I'm assuming what they're, they have some right with WCI, WCI with the power company, that they have the right to transfer that to another entity?
Well, they own it, they own it in fee simple.
Right.
WCI, and the idea was they would deed it to the district, and that was the idea.
And FPL would have an easement with their easement restrictions.
Their existing easements and their right-of-way consent, there's a number of older agreements in place, many years ago.
Can we get those easement documents of WCI?
Yeah, people have them now.
So we can read that and just, because I'm, I'm like Bill, that was my first thing, is okay, what are we buying here?
I have the...
Or what are we getting here for free?
I have, I think I have Puddle Work from way back when that would show that.
Those free things bite you in the backside every time you turn around.
They don't look a gift box to them.
One more remark, if you don't mind.
Yeah, quickly.
James Brown, one more remark, Ed, you made the comment that Gateway CDD is already taking care of all of that property.
Correct that, just to half of it.
Yeah, only taking care of half of it, you get to Hampton Park.
We stop.
You stop.
Yeah, that's correct, we knew that, thank you. Anything else for District Council?
No, ma'am. Oh, from me, I'm sorry.
Forefront, either way.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to move on to District Manager.
I'm going to switch the order a little bit, I'm going to let Mike with Public Works start, and then Kenny with Utilities, and then I'll follow up, I have a few comments, and we have a presentation on the storm also.
Sounds good.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager. One of the things I wanted to circle around back to, the gentleman that was here from Gardner, part of the reason, when we lost power, we have a generator, but Comcast went out, Comcast lost power, when Comcast lost their ability to send us internet, we, we, our phone lines went down and our internet went down, so we couldn't do mass communication to the public, we couldn't take any phone calls, so there, there wasn't, we could still get emails via our phones, but the, the server that is physically here was down, so we, we were not able to communicate with the public.
Yeah, and that's something, I mean, just part of, you know, something we need to just look at as part of our lesson learned plan, in the event of a natural disaster or whatever, have some kind of backup plan, I mean, I don't know if this is service or, you know, even the, the website would, your website's not hosted here, at least I don't, no, it's not, so maybe there's, you know, in some way, social media, there's a lot of other avenues, we just need to really formulate a plan, that's it.
Yeah. Just for the supervisors, we do have currently three contractors, tree contractors working in Gateway, Mainscape is, is working along Gateway Boulevard and Griffin, doing some of the smaller work, and they've also performed a bunch of work up in Stony Brook, we have another, two large tree companies that are working on the big stuff, Anchor Tree Company and Elite, and they'll be in here for probably in the next week, week and a half, cutting trees out. And just so you can communicate also to your residents, the, spoke to a gentleman today who's going to be, part of the cleanup is going to be done by FEMA, the tree removal, and all the trees have to be stacked, you've heard that on the news, need to be stacked next, you know, along the frontage of every property. So that's why we're stockpiling stuff out on Gateway Boulevard, and you'll see it on Griffin, so the claw trucks can come along and pick it up. I've understood, I understand that, you know, some of the residents are concerned that's going to kill the grass, but there's really not a whole lot we can do about that. There, I mean, there is another alternative, but it's very expensive, but $350 a load, we could have it privately removed, but that would become very costly.
And when are they going to start that, Mike?
The county has not given a date, I know in speaking with the company that's doing the, does trash removal, they, I guess they started in San Carlos this week, so, don't have any dates as to when they might be here.
Mark's question.
Mike, we talked about this, we're, we're stockpiling right now debris on the common park area.
Yes, sir.
Are, are we going to continue to do that, and do we have a way to get rid of it? And lastly, can the various associations bring that, their debris? I'm talking to the county, and I can tell you right now, our, our priority for getting debris removed out of all of our gated communities and non-gated communities isn't at the top of the list. It could be months before we see those people, and it's going to destroy these landscaping. Is there a chance that we could take and have all of our sub-associations, not only Gateway Greens, Silver Lake, Stony Brook, every one of them, bring all the debris and have that commons area a stockpiling, if we have a way to get rid of it? Do we have a way to get rid of it? I know we were talking about a innovative process of, what do you call it, vaporizing it?
Air curtain, they just dig a huge ditch and put fuel and a fan in and...
You have a bonfire.
Basically, but it's underground and it's reduced smoke.
Can, is there...
That's where we hit, the champagne party.
Can, yeah, with, with, what do you call those things, smores? The, can we do that? Because right now, everybody's sitting in, everybody's in the same boat, everybody's in the same boat, we're sitting here with oodles and oodles of that material. I had somebody estimate to me that we have 40, 55 cubic yard truckloads in Gateway Greens alone. I don't know what, if anybody realizes what that is, but that'd fill this building about five times over.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of debris, and we just can't have that sitting in this community for two months, just no way. And we're not getting anything from FEMA, nothing.
They sit on the outside seven weeks.
I'm sorry?
Seven weeks.
That means three months.
Two months, seven weeks.
Yeah.
The other thing, that to transport it up to the pool complexes is, is going to cost it.
I'm getting a price of 350 a truckload to transport it to the commons area. The question is, is that what is our plan if we do that and every community within Gateway have that as an alternative, that what do we do with that material?
Well, I...
What do we do with that?
Will Lee County pick it up?
Do we chip it, or will FEMA come there and into the field and pick it up?
And you were talking about the common, the boat by the pool, not the fun park.
I'm talking about the common...
We're using the fun park today, but I don't think we should...
No, 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 not fun park.
The common park.
Common park.
Yeah, okay.
Where are the pools at?
To answer your question, Mr. Tinkle, it has to be along the roadway, and it has to be in the right-of-way for them to pick it up, so, I already asked that question, if we had a staging area, would they come into the staging area, pick it up, and the answer was no, it has to be...
They will not.
It has to be along the roadway.
Then what would be our cost, Chris, if we went the route of what you talked about, the, the burn?
Getting prices right now on that equipment and availability.
I think we, we need to look at this, because this community can't have this. My fear in my community is right now, somebody go down one of our streets, and I don't know if you've been in Gateway Greens, you flick one cigarette out, you could burn that community down. It is so dry over there, it's nothing but a tinderbox. I don't even want, being on that HOA board, I don't even want to think about the fact that we aren't pursuing something to avoid this happening. And the only answer I see is that we're all in, we have 55 communities here, we're all in the same boat, this land and/or the FPL, that was my other one, is the FPL easement, is a place to stack that stuff and store it for whatever period of time. If we knew FEMA was going to be here in three weeks, four weeks, that's one thing, two months, that ain't going to get it, that ain't going to get it.
Well, part of, part of how the county gets reimbursed for the collection of this is how much they actually collect off the side of the road.
They get a contract, truckload.
So if, if they're not collecting it, then they're going to lose that money, so that's why they're asking you to leave it on the sides of the road.
They don't have to deal with the politics of the local deal, two months of that, you just isn't going to get it, is that simple?
Everything in Lee County is that way, I mean, you drive through most communities, it, it looks the same, Gateway's not that bad, my neighborhood, it's six feet high, on both sides of the road.
Going to Gateway Greens, I've got 10 feet high.
Yeah, it's bad.
10 feet high.
Yeah, it's, it's countywide, and they've, I know they've started collecting, I think they started in Cape Coral, I don't know if they've done anything in Fort Myers, but I know that they were, they were in Cape Coral.
They were supposed to start in Cape Coral Monday, and the last I heard, they haven't started yet.
I...
Unless you heard something today.
Yeah, I know they have.
But the issue is, is that I like the idea of the staff pursuing that as an alternative, but to wait that long, that period of time, Bill, I don't know what you guys are doing or what they're doing over at Pelican, I know when I was over there Tuesday looking at the water levels, I had to go around a couple of trees that were still in the road.
The pick, the city's picking it up.
That's right, you've got city over there, that's different.
County, you have...
Yeah, just a question also, what I'll also check is whether the district even has the power to act as a disposal entity, other than disposing of its own, you know, the third-party vendor, I mean, I have no difficulty from a legal perspective if the district was to allow people to stage it on district property, if there was to be removal that was good by some other party, but for the district to engage in the chipping, the burning, I don't know if that's within the powers.
Let's check that.
Yeah, I mean, one of the special powers, it has to be granted by the local entity, the county to the district, is waste disposal, and the question is, is this qualified as waste disposal, and if it does, we don't have that power, so I'll double check that.
You can't get over to Pelican, the city will take care of it.
Has anybody ever heard of Burning Man that they have, once a year in Nevada?
I'll call, I'll call Warren Buffett, get one of his trains to...
We could have one wheel of Burning Man here, burn all that stuff.
Tony's, Tony's furnishing the alcohol, so...
And you bring the smores.
So if we can, so if we can check that...
I'll check the problem.
The, the big thing is, we can then go back to the community and just tell them, guys, it is what it is, what it is.
The other thing we have to...
But I want to take and make sure that we turn, we turn over everything of trying to clean this mess up.
The other thing we'd have to look at is being reimbursed for that, we might not be able to be reimbursed, and then you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars that you would not be reimbursed for.
Figure out what the cost is, and we just convert it to a truckload.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars is a small amount, if we have a terrible fire with that stuff and we lose a bunch of homes.
I'm looking at 35 to 50,000 bucks in my community for 1,300 homes, that's a little bit less than $40 a home. They do that in a heartbeat to get rid of it off their streets. You go down our streets and it's like you're going down a canal, only not a snow, it's wood. It's horrible, so I think we need to pursue it.
They'll look into it, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Did have a few more issues.
Yes, please.
And, and going through Stony Brook, you, you noticed us driving around, we, a lot of the signs got taken down, the street signs and the stop sign combinations at the entrances of communities.
Really?
We've, we've removed those and then just placed stop signs in, in the interim so we can get those poles replaced. We're working on that now. Did have a question with regard to Stony Brook. I, I, Chair, I'd spoken to you about looking into a pole replacement program in Stony Brook, and while this kind of pushed the issue along.
It sure did.
We lost probably 14 or 15, so one of the questions I was going to ask you all, did you, since we're replacing half of them, would you like us to look into replacing everything since we were starting conversations about that initially?
Yes. We'd like to get a price on that.
Time out, I don't know what you're talking about.
Street signs, a, a lot of the street signs in Stony Brook got knocked over and they're going to need replacements.
Okay, for some reason or other, I, I jumped to light poles, because I saw some of the...
We lost, we lost some of those too in Stony Brook.
That's FPL, yeah.
We have to replace those. Work with them to get those replaced. Okay.
Yes, and, and the HOA will work with you on some of that, too.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Mike. I guess I should be asked, did anybody have any questions for Michael, since he... Okay.
Got it.
Kenny, next?
Hey. Kenny Hall, utility manager. I guess I'll start at the beginning. We came in, we got rolling about, I got in about 11, went through, I had to make an initial assessment, go out, find out what's wrong, what, what was going on with the system, electricity. How that side stayed with power was what really helped us greatly. Everything on the right-hand side of Gateway Boulevard was on. When I went to Girl Scout...
As a county commissioner, I mean...
When that, when that, when we found that, we were able to pretty much stick to one side of Gateway going through with, we had, at, one time I had 11 stations down completely. As it went, as we progressed day by day, more and more came on, more and more came on, until we got down to Stony Brook on Thursday, which was a great day for, that was when all the stations, we, we still have one station down, Hidden Links on Gateway Boulevard is still under an auxiliary generator. Everything else came back online. Magnolia Lakes probably was our biggest problem. Magnolia Lakes and B9. Magnolia Lakes at first was, there was no way I could safely get anybody into there to get the equipment in there, to really do anything at all. It was about under a foot of water, as I remember it, and we just taped it off and basically abandoned it for a while, because there was no way we were getting in there at that time. B9, we put a auxiliary generator on it, it really had no effect. We were able to gain maybe inches for about 24 hours, 48 hours, and I'd say a day and a half would be a good estimate. Where, once the, the flooding started to recede, we gained level and we got it pumped down. And then it was just, from there, it was Hampton Park. We had so many trees down in Hampton Park that we had to go in with sewer caps and cap, start capping lines, because we had, I think I had three in a row where the sewer caps were underwater and you could just see it funneling into there, and it just completely hydrologically overloaded that entire system. Wednesday afternoon, we got our first call of a manhole coming out. I had to shift everybody we had into Hampton Park. We got the Thompson pump in there and started just pumping it out as fast as we could. We had a cleanup crew go right behind us, we went out, identified as many of the manhole covers that we had that had tipped over, and it was very, very minimal. But we had them go out, luckily we had a, a crew right there that was able to go and knock them out. And then it just basically got down to Stony Brook. We have some serious flaws at that master station. I mean, there are some serious operational problems there. One of the biggest that we found that was most concerning to me was that we were having the stage equipment right in that intersection, right there, and it creates a constriction point. You've got, everybody wants to go, come out and turn, or coming in and turning, and you've got floodwater, and you've got people walking by. It is, it's just, that could be very easily a very big disaster. And, and then on the second station, on the other hand, on the other side in front of Bluestone is another real constriction point. We've got some serious work to do in that one. And we're going to recommend that they, we put a fixed generator at that master station that can run both pumps, like we do, like the one that we've had installed at Pelican Reserve, that can run the station like we have regular mainline power. But it was just a race against time. That first 48 hours, alls we were basically trying to do was to get the septic sludge out as fast as we could. And we worked with the Lee County, and we were calling them in as, as we're emptying the stations out and getting it to the plant, letting them know that they have a, plug flows coming in, septic sludge. There's a difference between the, in the sludge categories, but if it sits in that system for at least 48 hours, you're going to have some seriously septic, very, very nasty stuff in that system. So we tried to evacuate it as fast as we possibly could. It just came down to a matter of getting it to a manageable scale, and then we had fuel issues, where we were starting to come up on our fuel. The machinery had just been running non-stop all the time, and it was starting to, to crumble. And all of our staff, those guys went at it for days. I'd say we were 16, 17-hour, 18-hour days. And that Thompson bypass pump, you know, that was the, the difference. That saved us. That was the key to the whole operation. If we lost that Thompson, we were, that would have, we'd have been in some real trouble. And what we found out is we were on our own. We have county, we have inter-county, the intergovernment, doesn't really mean much in that kind of situation, because they were just as taxed as we were. And there was, so you're basically on your own. So we made that move by that Thompson pump, and that is what, I can tell you 100%, that is what made the difference. That we could get that Thompson pump in, get it pumping, and use the auxiliary generators for the satellite stations, and we kept, we pretty much kept it at the masters. But at one time, I believe I had four master stations down. And another big issue was Pelican Reserve, we were completely cut off, and to go completely around just to get at it. The service road was underwater, the, the road, all the trees had come down, it was impassable. And then to have to cart all of our equipment around at night got pretty dicey. But Matarita Master Station has a ton of capacity, so that really saved us on that one. We were able to get it out there Tuesday night, pump it all down, let it run for the night, and then Wednesday morning, get out there, and it was emptied out, and we never had a problem until, and then the next, within I think 12 hours of that, it had power. So each part started coming on, until we got down to Stony Brook.
Mr. Guy, I think you had a question for him or a comment?
I did. Were you here when all of the public participants congratulated you and your staff and, and Chris with what you did last week?
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you heard that. And I'm very pleased for you and us and all of us. When you were talking about installing a permanent generator, immediately popped into my mind, is there a way that you could install that generator on a, on a concrete slab that is...
Elevate it.
...two or three feet higher than straight level, huh?
Yes, you can. It's the way to do it.
Would you consider doing that?
Oh, yes. We were going to have, say, there's, that's one of the, one of the problems there. It's in a bowl, that master station is in a, in a bowl. And what happens is if you get two or three inches of rain, which will happen, it'll flood in that area. And it looks like there's a, you know, a pond over your, over your station, and it's because that front gate where everything comes into there, it just, it just overwhelms that station.
We've just got to make sure that that power cord that goes from the standby generator to the hookup point is all above the water.
And we hired two new employees and they were invaluable. With the, the existing staff, we had to do a lot of on-the-fly modifications to those generators that you wouldn't, we would have never really seen until we got into a, to a situation where it was, you know, we had to hardwire some of them into the panels, the, the outlets were bad. We tried to get over everything that we possibly could before the storm, and we pretty much did, but it got to a point where you had to make a lot of real quick, immediate modifications, workarounds, but we got really lucky. If, when I went through Callaway Greens about noon Monday after the storm, if we'd had had to bring equipment in, I, I don't know how I would have been able to do it. I really, that, just going through and looking at it, being like, how am I going to get anything in here? It was in such...
I don't, I don't think the, I was out there watching a lot of this, and I'm telling you, I don't think the residents have, I know some of them have said already, but a lot of them just don't have a clue how bad it could have gotten if it hadn't have been for the staff. And same thing with Mike on the, the water side, on the stormwater lowering those ponds down. We hadn't lowered those ponds down, it would have been a disaster.
Still would have been.
Did you use that big Ford truck that you don't like to use very often?
Yes. We have not had real, a time yet where we can all sit down and go over and get it all out. We've, we've been talking about it back, we're going to do this, this is, and that was one of the biggest things that we came across, was that, that crane truck is invaluable. I mean, especially in emergency, that is going to be our emergency rig if this happens again, which I'm, I'm assuming it will sooner or later. There was a lot of lessons learned.
Yeah, I think, I think you hit the nail on the head. We need a post Irma report on all the stuff as to where we have weaknesses, what we need to do. Because if it happened once, it could sure as heck happen again.
Yeah, and what's critical about that, when you, when you do, you know, post-analysis, it needs to be, you guys need to set aside time while it's still fresh in your mind, and make sure that you're documenting things as, as it comes, comes to you. If you wait too much longer, you're just going to have a, a loss in, in some items. Some things you won't probably ever be able to forget, but there are some other things that you might want to miss. A, a couple of things, Kenny. One, I mean, I think the staff was incredible. And again, you know, having the right staff and the right number of staff in, in place is so important. I mean, everyone was out, every, you know, Chris, Kenny, and Mike, and everyone else, I saw Terry, and I mean, it, it was just, it was remarkable. And again, I said it last time at the board meeting when we had the, the big rain, that the measures that we took this past year made a huge impact just in, in, in the big rain, and then on the hurricanes with the pump, and, you know, things that, that Chris put into play, you know, last year is, is critical. So it's really important for you guys to make that assessment, you know, find opportunities to fix these problems, like with Magnolia Lakes, are we, are we encouraging them to restructure the burms back there? I think that was...
Cypress Cave.
Cypress Cave.
Cypress Cave.
Cypress Cave, maybe.
Yes, they, they, they realize that that's a, it's a homeowners association issue, not a CDD, and we've, we've made sure they understand that. And I think they're aware of what they've got to do, but that, that brings up a good point, is one of the problems we have is an FPL issue. I think the main reason Gateway Greens never lost power is if you go into our community and look at our roads, I don't think our roads are built any different than the other roads as far as the elevation. But what we do have, and maybe it's because we used all the excess fill from building all the ponds, and we had the fill available. But we have a slope that goes from the roads almost from every house that goes up to the lot, and the FPL transformers, and FPL has six to seven houses on every transformer in all of Gateway. Ours are setting up about 18 inches on average above the road. You go to almost everyone, Margaret, yours, Cypress Cave, all of those, you look at them, they're flush with the road. So the minute the road, and keep in mind, that's a 20, or Tyler, five-year, five-year road design flood, five-year storm?
Five-year, one day.
Five-year, one day. That's not much. That happens a lot. The minute that road gets wet in those communities, that transformer goes. And FPL, that Monday night after Irma, we were out, and God, everybody in his world was out on that. The issue was, FPL made it clear, we're not going to touch that. We can't come in here with that high voltage and reactivate these, you've got to wait till the water level drops back down. So one of the things that we may want to be doing, and I'll tell you, it's a mountain of work, is trying to figure out what we do to elevate those pads in those communities where they're basically flush with the road, because they're set at a five-year design, it's going to happen every time.
Well, in, in Stony Brook, it's not uniform. Some of them are higher, and some of them are, you know, dependent on who puts the pad in.
That needs to be done, but I, the unfortunate thing is, is it, it's not a CDD issue.
Right.
But it, it is a CDD issue in that, that we're the ones that these people have to turn to. And maybe what we do is, I, I don't know, you know they've got main power coming in and those, into those pads, so you have to elevate it. The question is, how do you do it? Can you simply elevate that pad and put a concrete, four concrete blocks under it? I don't know. I have a feeling you have to take it apart, and you're talking about a lot of money, but I'm telling you, I know a lot of people in Cypress Cave that were out without a power in the other communities, they probably wouldn't care what that cost is to add power for six, seven, eight, 10 days.
That would really be a disaster.
What they want to do is, since that's an FPL statewide issue, PSC rate tariff issue, is something if you get a number of communities involved.
Go together.
And get the county commissioners also to make recommendations to the PSC, that they require that as part of the tariff, you know, some, it's a statewide issue. You know, as part of their hardening and the part of the re-investing.
Our problem in here is, is that when the plans come in for these developments, we look, we, we're supposed to be looking at them with a fine-tooth comb, but we don't look at those FPL pads. Because FPL comes in and places that. But in their defense, if the ground elevation is X, they're not going to put it at 2X, they're going to set it on the ground. And that's what they did. And it's, and it's a nightmare, and the people over there, they're very upset about it.
So Kenny, just one, one more thing. I know you had mentioned in Stony Brook, you know, getting a fixed generator over there. Any other lessons learned from, are there any proposed modifications to that system?
For Stony Brook?
Yeah, you know, to...
The biggest, the biggest, the biggest thing that we keep finding, and we learned this from the storm, was that when that, when that stormwater gets over top of that sidewalk, we get just massive iodine. It's coming in from those sewer caps. And we have, I started out after the, after the storms, the last storm, when what, what we saw happen in Stony Brook, to go out and start identifying those caps and finding out where they are, and it just, there's just not enough time. We have got to get out there and go over all those caps, and we were finding them with blown-off lids, or we would find the concrete pads that they're sitting on are undermined, and it's going in this way. So it looks perfectly fine, but when it goes underwater, it just pours right in.
I think the biggest issue for me is, you know, that's a result of, of water flow. So if I come, drill it back to kind of root cause, it would be, how do you minimize the, the excessive water flow? So I know it's supposed to drain in the street and whatever, but is...
The key is, is that's what we talked about, we've got a major discussion of our entire flowway design. We have got to have the ability to control the water such that, but we didn't in Gateway Greens where we opened a couple of wears. We've got to be able to do that in all of these in, in advance of a storm, and get that water level down to where we have storage. We took it, this, no kidding what Mike did, on five, Basin Five, which is on the south side of Gateway Greens, we dropped that thing down about 18 inches, two feet. That 11 inches of water, that storm dropped, before the eye of the storm had left Gateway, the water was overflowing that weir. That's how much, and how fast, that volume of all these lakes we have in the south half filled up to produce enough water to go over that weir is unbelievable.
And it's unsatisfactory.
It's unsatisfactory is correct.
We learned, we learned with the, the storm in Stony Brook before the hurricane, that once we got it down past those caps, it sat on that wa, on that road for another two days before it was completely carried, and we had no issue. It's, the, the manholes and the, the, the basic system is sound. There is not, we did not, once we got it past, once we got the level and drained it down, it, it never went into alarm, we never ran, it just ran like normal, and there's a foot of water on the road, and we're running like it's normal.
Well, I guess the point is, having a foot of water on the road, you know, how do we...
I think you, you guys are talking about two different things. He's talking about the sewer system and the lift stations.
I'm talking about sanitary.
And you're talking about the stormwater drainage out of the community.
Right, yeah. That's what I'm talking about.
So those are...
But one protects the other.
Once we get off that sidewalk or get down below onto the sidewalk with that flooding, the sanitary sewer is sound. It's when we go over those caps, it just is, it's a disaster.
I guess without someone just, you know, not making that an issue and trying to address the, the overflow, is there a better way to, you know, to get that water flowing through?
We, we've got some work to do on that.
Yeah. A lot of them.
But again, great job, Kenny, I think you guys did awesome.
Yeah, yes, thank you. I know the whole community is very thankful that you guys were willing to work the hours were willing to work the hours that you worked to keep the community safe. So thank you once again.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes, I was firstly, thank you. Because I've been up in Connecticut and it was just wonderful to have a toilet that washed. I mean, I know what we think, but that, as Mr. Brand said, he filled the bathtub and everything with that. To me was, I know we were out of electricity and we had fun, but that was-
That's what we do.
So I wanted to thank you for that.
So Jim Brand, Hampton Park. So in my opening remarks, I mentioned everything was wonderful except for one thing, and that is the manhole cover in front of my home was backwashing sewage into my street. Do you have a list of all the manholes that you looked at? Like, so I never saw anybody look at my manhole. When I got out and I swept all the wet leaves-
This was the first day?
Yeah.
We didn't get to answer that.
I swept the leaves that smelled like sewage out of the front of my house on the thirteenth.
The only, the only time that we saw any sewage out of manholes from what we saw was on-
This was taking place during the hurricane. I had water.
Margaret.
So I guess my request is, is there any way you could look at that manhole?
Sure.
Kenny, what we can do on that is if you've got an identification of those, we did this up north all the time, just go to bolt-down manholes.
Yeah, we've been popping manholes all week.
Go to bolt-down manholes. Now, the downside of that is it'll send the water someplace else, but-
Thank you, Margaret.
-it'll control it.
Yes, second part of my question.
Okay.
I know that Mr. Shoemaker has addressed this at our HOA meeting, that you are going to look at the design of the water flow. Is this correct?
That's, that's not his bailiwick.
Oh, that's yours.
You know, we'll be addressing that in just a minute under my time.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Ready for the district manager report?
We are.
Okay, well, I'll make it quick too. And, yeah, guys did a great job. And when the electricity came on and we got things flowing in Stony Brook, I sent Margaret a shot of the wet well and I said, the poop's flowing again.
Luckily enough, my internet wasn't working at that time.
So I told her she might want to delete that picture. I was out talking to some of the neighbors in the Girl Scout building, I mean, area, and they were cleaning up their street. And they asked me, I thought you guys were going to buy this building. When are you going to get it? And I said, well, there's a holdup with the HOA. And I said, HOA, we have vagrants and people going back there doing whatever. The place is looking dilapidated. It's a neighborhood eyesore. We want you people here. And I said, we'll go to the HOA meeting and talk about it. Also had something with the debris that started piling up over at Eagle Point. And Mike and I were out there and we put some signage up and saw the contractor was down in Town Lake in the commercial area cleaning it up. And I said, what are you doing, taking that debris up there? And he said, so-and-so from the HOA, and I'm not going to name any names, told us we could bring it here and dispose of it. I said, oh, from a commercial area onto a residential? I said, it's CDD property. You need to stop. And by the way, I may have you coming back up and-
Picking it up. So that was, that was a vendor or contractor that was moving? So that wasn't part of-
No, maybe some of the residents did. And I mentioned, I said, if it's an emergency, we can move out. But I want a dump site there. And all of a sudden, we see the guy and he's down there in Town Lakes from commercial areas where he was hired. And I have a call-in to that person because they were very specific who it was and when they told them they could do it. So I'll get to the bottom of that. But I said, if that's the case, then I'll send the bill for the disposal to the Eagle Point HOA. And some of the issues with the I and I were looking at, and some of them was people was running up on the grass to get out of the flooded road. They ran over a few of those.
Yeah.
And I'll give a big thanks to the county and the staff and everyone for their hard work. And when you read the number of communities that have had and still have rivers of sewage flowing down the streets and backed up toilets and ruined homes, and very little flooding damage, I'd give it an A+ myself. As a matter of fact, Kenny asked me, he said, because we're all here long hours and work, and he goes, come, you don't look so tired. I was going to say, because I'm not working as hard as you are. And to follow up on some of the flooding issues, I have Chris Hagan and Shane Maxwell. Chris Hagan from Hagan Engineering, Shane Maxwell from Aquatic Observations. They worked with us on the Lake Bank Project. And also Chris and Chrissy Matt Tower from Matt Tower Environmental that were instrumental in helping us clean some of the structures and get some of the flowways clean. Also worked with us on the Lake Bank Project. But I'll introduce Mr. Hagan. And he just has a brief presentation and some drone footage and recommendations that come up with on the stormwater side.
Can you put it on the screen so that we get that to the audience?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, folks. My name is Chris Hagan.
Said the done.
Oh, look at that. You going to run the slides?
Sure.
Excellent. Thank you. As Chris mentioned, my name's Chris Hagan. We've been working with your team on the Lake Bank remediation project. And as you all know, you know, there have been, very good. If you could look to the first slide, please. We've had an exceptional wet season this year, and Irma did dump a hundred-year storm on us. It was a one-day hundred-year event. And the system seemed to function pretty much as expected. Next, please. This is your drainage system as you know it. And it basically runs from east to west with the main outflow being to eventually the Six Mile Cypress. I can point along the drawings. You all are as familiar as anyone with where the weers are, where the constrictions are. The key here, as Ed had even mentioned earlier, is that, you know, the main flowways need to be maintained, need to be kept open, vegetation down, weers need to be cleared, especially in advance of a storm. Next, please. Now, one of the problems we've had this year, and it's, I want you to understand, you all are better off than most. In Collier County, there's significant flooding still going on in a lot of the communities. Now, they had, from a rainfall perspective, they had the same amount of rainfall. They had a little more wind, but the same amount of rainfall. This thirteen-year drought that we've just finished, realistically, is what has happened is people become complacent. They haven't maintained their drainage systems as closely as they should have. Also, the low water levels have allowed vegetation to grow in from the banks and the shores. And what used to be a nice channel cross-section that had lots of capacity, all of a sudden, this vegetation's growing out into the edges and constricting it. And it's becoming like a clogged artery, for lack of a better term. Next, please. Now, during all of this, at the end of the, or during the end of the drought here, we were doing the Lake Bank remediation project. At that time, we were on board, Shane and myself, to do some construction observation coordination with the contractors. And we noticed how low the lake bank, or lake elevations were throughout. And this is a good illustration of seeing how, you know, the toe of slope, the top of the green material that you see there, and where you see the orange line is where the top of the water is supposed to go to generally. I'm sorry, the top of the green is. Next, please. Twenty seventeen wet season. As you all know, there's been quite a bit of rain. And all of the drought has been made up pretty quickly. Between August 24th and August 28th, we had nine and a half inches of rainfall, which is roughly the equivalent of a twenty-five-year event. When that event happened, we noticed that the system was not bleeding down nearly quickly enough. And it was impacting the contractor's ability to work on these lake bank remediation projects. Generally, projects in the South Florida Water Management District should have designed so that the roads stay dry in a twenty-five-year storm. This project and areas old enough that your roads are designed on the five-year, one day, which is really at a detriment, and it kind of puts you behind the eight ball. Collier County requires twenty-five-year, three-day storm for dry roads. So this is a selection that Lee County and the district had chosen to stay a little lower, which gives you a challenge. Homes are to stay dry during the hundred-year event. Did you all have any homes flood?
You might talk to the six people that live over in Cypress K and it came about that far.
I think it was-
Believe it or not, with a hundred-year storm event, the system did work in spite of all the other challenges that you all have had, and we'll go into those later. The system didn't fail. It could have been better. And the problem doesn't appear to be with the way the ponds were distributed. It's more along the lines of the distribution or the artery system was clogged in places. So it didn't drain down as quickly as it should have. And that's one of the things that's exacerbated some of the other problems like infiltration issues with your sewage, et cetera. Next, please. Here's a good example of what was happening before Irma. You can see that we were, on the left side, we were completing the lake bank remediation. And the same drone photograph is at the end of the project when we, after we'd had that nine and a half inches of rain in August. And you can see, we were staged up quite a bit. And these stages were spread far enough apart that you should have bleed down back down to your control elevation within seventy-two hours after a storm event. And therefore, we obviously knew there was a problem. And this was something that Chris and his team had challenged us all, try and figure out where the problems were. Next, please. And here's where we found a problem. The last outfall lake and the outfall to the Six Mile Cypress is the lake is on the left and the control structure is on the right. The lake on the left, as you can see, is smack full of hydrilla. And that, the flow from this whole project and this whole area goes through that lake. That's like pouring water into a sponge. It just doesn't come out of the other side as quickly. You can imagine all that hydrilla and what it does to the hydraulic capacity to push water. Then, the hydrilla piled up on the fish guard here and broke the fish guard and basically had clogged your main outfall. So we realized from looking at this, this is obvious reason why we weren't getting the bleed down in the system. Next slide. So Met Towers folks and came in at Chris's direction and pulled out the broken section of the fish grate, or the fish grates. And you can see how it improved the flow on the, on the right. They also had Shane's company spray for the hydrilla, which brought the hydrilla down, as you can see in the lake on the left side of that. These two things in anticipation of the storm allowed the system to bleed down to get closer to control in anticipation of Irma. Next, please. Hurricane Irma comes and hits. You get eleven and a half inches of rain in one day, which is the one hundred-year storm. As you can see, the streets are underwater. And unfortunately, that's going to be an issue you'll have to deal with during these peak events. The idea now is, how quick can we get this to recover? And what can, what can you all do with your drainage system to improve that? Next slide, please.
I think that's my car.
What are you, a submarine commander?
I think that's my truck.
This is the main, this is the main drainage map again. And I feel like it's redundant to go through that. We'll just pass through that one, Mike, and the blow-up. And let's get to the next one. Based on this, we came up with some preliminary recommendations. And some of them are blatantly obvious and have already been kicked around today. One is, we think you need to develop a more aggressive maintenance program to look at your weers and your main flow channels. Your lakes are functioning fine, but it really looks to be where the challenges were. I heard stories that one of the weers had a bleed down blocked with a dead turtle. I've seen it happen before. You get these small weers for bleed down that get clogged with debris because they don't have proper trash grates around them or baffles. Second, you'd want to evaluate all of your inline weers. That means the main transmission weers. Because we now have history for flow in the area, it may be appropriate to go back to our permits, to the original district permits, and reevaluate those. One, to see if, because of submerged water conditions, if the weers can be increased in size or if additional operable gates can be added. These are permit, district permit modifications. You've got a lot of this modeled already. It's just a matter of grinding it through with the county staff and with the water management district. The district is going to probably be much more interested in working with you all as a CDD in getting operable weers. Private developers or single HOAs, they're not going to want to work with, but they will work with you all because they're afraid, if an operable weir is in place, that people will use it to manipulate the water to their own benefit and their neighbor's detriment. They recognize the CDD is a local elected governor or board, and you all will be more responsible. You won't just open them whenever you feel like. And you'll do it in advance of a real event. The next thing is, you know, doing some better tracking of rainfall and water level data. I know that we've been trying to do that, and the rain gauge here at Gateway blew out. That's why some of my documentation is based on the next nearest rain gauge. It's important to have this again. The more you document and prove, the better your case will be going forward with the district and the county to revise your weers. The fifth item is your perimeter berm's. We know that there was a problem with one of the perimeter berm's. And you ended up taking on off-site water and somebody else basically dumped their problem in to exacerbate your issues. Now that you've had an event, you know where that perimeter berm break is, and that HOA needs to be responsible for fixing it. But it's something that each, at the end of each dry season, the perimeter berm's for all your projects should be walked, just to make sure there hasn't been a washout. It can be as silly as a gopher tours borough puts a hole in the top of a berm because it's elevated. And the next thing you know, it ends up being a washout. And on the ride up today from Naples, the brand-new overpasses to the airport have got massive erosion on the side slopes. And it happens. It can happen anytime. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to go out there and walk the berm and say, yeah, it looks good. Or hey, wait a minute. Kids have been riding their motorcycles through here and have parted a little trench through the top of the berm. And last is developing a formal pre-storm protocol. This was informal and it was effective. You know, thank goodness, your staff did a great job there. But you may want to formalize a pre-storm protocol just so that six years from now, when this board isn't here and these staff people aren't here, and the memories are gone of Irma, because we talked about Wilma was seventeen or twelve years ago.
Five.
And, and I talk about Wilma, I've been here thirty-one years, so I'm kind of used to it. Tony, you've been here longer than I have.
About a hundred years, right?
Yeah. Only forty, only forty-two.
This is my thirty-first anniversary. But realistically, have a protocol in place so that, you know, when, when Chris and Mike aren't here, and two generations from now, this board's not here, and you've got Irma junior coming up the pipe, you can come out and you'll have a manual that says, hey, guys, let's check these weers, let's check these flowways, let's check these perimeter berm's. And that's just with regards to stormwater. You would want to have the same type of a protocol with your utilities department also. That is the conclusion of the report that I have. And this is based on, you know, standing back and watching your team work. Ninety percent of the stuff has already been handled. It's getting prepared for the future that we really haven't done. And I think that's what your next big tasks are. Thank you.
Mr. Dye?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Chris, that was an excellent report.
Well, thank you.
And I would, I would like to have a hard copy of those slides for my personal benefit. And if Chris were here, I was going to suggest that we put those slides on our website so the folks can know what a professional has to say about our, our organization and the way we handle this.
Yes, sir. Well, we, I've, they have my electronic file and they can, do with the notion, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like a copy of it, too.
As a result of this, I've been doing a lot of research of the e-permitting system in South Florida Water Management District. Because if you recall at the last meeting, I hate to say that, I asked the question because it happened, was how was this place designed? Well, I got a lot of the information. And I ran into some problems. Chris didn't hit all those because he didn't go into all the detail that I went into. But it's scary. Three issues that I found, and I've been talking to Tyler about it. Issue one, and you don't have to be a hydraulic person to understand this because you can do the math in your head. All of our flow goes over through flowway two to hit I-75. Keep in mind, I-75 was built long before Gateway came in. It was built earlier. They gave us two four-by-eight box covers. That's thirty-two times two, sixty-four square feet. Just imagine that. That's the opening. Sixty-four square feet. We then go, we go back to tree line, which has about maybe a three-hundred-yard canal that goes behind Colonial that hits tree line. They come in there and they put in two eleven-by-six box covers. That's a hundred and thirty-two square feet. We're trying to put a round peg in a square hole. That I-75 is a restriction. And it backs up. And what restriction it doesn't do, tree line takes care of the rest. Then, come to find out, and we've known about this sometime, I guess, Tyler, we were, learned about it, I guess, a little bit when we were dealing with Timber Creek, to our friends to the east. We've got numerous pipes that some brainchild put in when they put Daniels around to eighty-two, to Gunnery. That allows all that airport south, northeast corner to flow back our way. Well, that, everybody was talking about, well, it's not that big. It can go, come to you or it can go to them. Well, then I talked to Andy Tilton. Andy Tilton got his bows and uproar over this, but to no end. Guess what the weir elevation is at good old airport side? Twenty-five. Ours is twenty-four. You tell me which way the water's going to go. It isn't going their way. It's coming back on us. And that's another problem. When you look at the design of this thing, I'm going around to, I think, could say with what Bill was saying, this place was designed for fifty-two hundred and ninety-nine acres. You go and do the math, we're over seven thousand acres because of mistakes made by bureaucrats of allowing stuff to happen because they didn't have an answer. So we've got some work to do to go. But I like your idea on the protocol. I totally agree with that. Because one of the things that we're going to have to convince them if we want to go to adjustable weers, is that we know what the heck we're doing on it, and that protocol is necessary. The other thing that we were doing in a lot- The other thing that we were doing, and a lot of people have done it around the community, is they put in stakes or ribbons. The people over at Cypress Cave, they've got ribbons and paint, marking these high water levels. So to have that history, we've got a lot of it that, that we're going to have to rely on. But the, but the bottom line is, at this point in time, less than until, in my opinion, just simple things. Chris had the, well, I won't say what your idea was, but it was a good one. We can't have that water coming from the airport this way. It's that simple. And the second thing is, is that, and I don't know how we do that, other than the fact of what Jim and I are working on, talking and getting the congressman involved, is we need another opening under I-75. We need another opening. You can't have a hundred and thirty-two square feet going in to sixty-four square feet. I mean, anybody knows. What does that do? It backs up. And when it backs up to tree line, Bill, it backs up to your weir two. When it backs up your weir two, it backs up your weir three. When it backs up your weir three, the rest of us over here suffer. And the problem is, it, it won't work. The hydraulics here are simple. But with these restrictions, and he used that word several times, this system isn't going to work under these, these designs. But the bottom line is, is that you can't take a fifty-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine acre design and sit here and talk about thirty-seven CFS per square mile, or three-hundred-and-sixty, three-hundred-and-seventy CFS total, when you got seven thousand.
And then different...
The math doesn't work.
Different developers built different sections of the community, and the fact they weren't worried about it all working together.
Well, we, I totally agree. We need to take and develop some type of a, a, a analysis of this, but our, our problem is going to be, is going to South Florida, and we have an argument, but I think that we go to South Florida after we have the political horsepower behind us.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hagan? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, ask a question.
Jim, quickly, please.
I really liked your presentation, it's awesome. But water from Gateway flows not only under I-75, it goes where? Six-mile slough, ten-mile channel. If those are full of silt, like your demonstration of the lake full of silt and that weir block, if they're full of silt and full of, you know what?
Don't help us.
Our water still will back up. So we need to include, Madam Chairperson and everybody, we need to include, when we talk to South Florida Water Management and Lee County, we need to include those two channels. They've got to be drenched.
And these people down at Island Park on South Forty-One...
They'll be, they'll be making sure that that'll be...
They should be right, they should be in front of us arguing for that, because they turned into a lake.
I think they probably already are.
Yep.
Next.
A little comment I had, I was gonna see if Mr. Matt Towers here, if he wants to contract to remove debris from Gateway.
Absolutely. Show me the money.
Show me the money.
I know, I know some willing people who would contract to remove gateway debris.
I will move to supervisor comments, then. Mrs. Flaherty?
Chris's question?
Yes, go.
This hadn't went on the agenda, but we kind of just dropped it. Where are we at with our landscape architect issue?
Prefer that, that comment to Mike.
Should I get another bottle of champagne out here?
For the record, Mike Tisch, Public Works Manager. Bill had contacted me, he was, we had met with him. I'm trying to think, did you meet with us? It was, Alan and I met with him and we, he was going to modify his scope of services to revise the contract to have more public involvement and more planning aspects to it.
Well, all of, all the board members were challenged to go over there and look at the set of plans that we had. And I was willing, and I admitted, I admitted, "I'm not doing it again," that I admitted I was wrong on that. But I went and looked at those plans. That was trash. I can add a five-year-old develop plans like that. I'm all for if you go back on your original deal of starting all over, terminating, and I'm, I'm all for it.
We'll bring that back at another meeting. Mrs. Flaherty? Supervisor comments?
Yes, I just want to thank Chris and Mike and Kenny. And I know that Chris and Mike, I don't know if Kenny was here, they spent the time in here sleeping and were here all during the hurricane. And I really do appreciate that dedication.
And I appreciate that, too, but it's a little easier when there's a generator or else.
Mama didn't raise no fool.
Even, even though the power, where I live, was on Tuesday early in the day.
Mr. Guy?
Madam Chairman, I'd like a moment of personal privilege to offer my applause to Kenny and all of his...
Thank you, I was gonna do that myself. Thank you, I was gonna offer that.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, that's just fine. I agree with you totally. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, and I, I think if we can all agree, as a small token, I would love for Chris to take staff out to a, a good steak or, or somewhere out to dinner, because they put in long hours. And, and let's also remember this, when it comes time at the end of the year or during budget times, when we're looking at salaries and bonuses and benefits...
And how important good staff is.
And when, when these guys basically neglect their own homes, their own situations to come and, and, and put in work to benefit us and our homes and our families, I think that's a, that's a great thing. Can't thank you guys enough.
I agree with you all. Nothing else.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.
At, at four fifty-three.
Appreciate this, Ed.
Wow.